Okay, let's rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Hedlund?
Here.
Trustee McNally?
Here.
And Trustee Parr and Trustee Clements are absent.
Okay, thank you. Our, oh, hi, Dr. Benante. The next meeting of the Hall Day Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, December 17th, 7:00 PM, right here in the high school, room 211. And the workshop topic will be a curriculum update, which I believe is an update from some conversation we had earlier in the year, right? The principals were giving us some conversation about how they were looking at what was working and what wasn't working, and thinking about making shifts or not making shifts. And this is the update to that?
In part, yes. And I also would like Ms. Barbera to provide an overview of the work that she's been doing with the Curriculum Council, as well as some other projects as well. So I may bias the report a little bit more towards her work, just because I think that's a perspective the board would be interested in hearing, as well as follow-up on building level work.
Great. Okay, great. I'll turn it over to Dr. Benante.
Thank you. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Welcome back from an extended break.
Extended.
Yeah, it was an early morning this morning for me, so bear with me. Been up for a while. And I never sleep well when there's inclement weather, so always worried about sleeping through the superintendent's phone conference at 4:30. I'm going to pass these out, just for your reference. I wanted to provide the board with a brief update on the coherence planning process. Excuse me. As last meeting we met, I mentioned that we would be having a coherence planning team meeting the following day. And subsequently, we're going to have another meeting next week. So a lot is happening between these two sessions, so it's a good opportunity just to keep the board informed of how things are moving along. I'm going to pull up the file that you have in front of you. So one thing I had mentioned during the last meeting is that there are several teams that are part of this coherence planning process, and those teams are each examining a different system within the school. Systems that support establishing goals for learning, teaching for learning, assessment or measures of learning, a group that examined the supporting agencies that we work with, our PTA, our Board of Education, our School Foundation, and then a team that looked at external factors. And the charge between our meeting in October and our last meeting in November was for each of those teams to go out and make an assessment of the school system as it related to each of those goal areas, and to provide an overview to the full coherence planning team of what information they collected and what their assessment was of the system in that way. This is the rubric they were utilizing, so it's on the front of your overview here. From everything from seeing no evidence of the desired coherence outcome, all the way through systemic effort to create the coherence outcome, and it's functioning, not only is it an effort, but that system is functioning effectively within the school system. So that's where you see the zero through four scale here. So generally, zero, no evidence, four, excellent, and then you have your scales in between. And I pulled this together just in preparation for tonight, so it's not complete, as I was pulling from each of the group's work and trying to condense this down to something that's manageable to read and to leave you with for the time being. But I provide a brief overview of the specific area that the team was examining. So goals for learning, what that is. And then there are indicators related to that area. So goal-setting context and philosophy, a few sub-indicators there, goal-setting process with a few sub-indicators there. There are some, some areas have more indicators than others, goal-setting support and engagement, what that is, materials and resources, what that is, with the sub-indicators that are attached to that. And then you'll see for the screen here, I put it in purple, it's only in black and white on your overview, how that team rated our school system as it relates to those objectives and those indicators. So you'll see the team, which was Group One, Goals for Learning, provided a rating of two on most, if not all of these areas. I think that was, yep, all of those areas. And what Goal Area Two indicates is that there's been some effort related to this, but its implementation is uneven or is yet to deliver meaningful changes in student or adult performance within the school. So I'm not going to, it was not my intention to go through each of these in great detail, as much just to provide an overview to the board, to give you a sense of what direction this is heading in, or has been heading in over the last two weeks. And I provided the ratings for the first three groups, I believe. So Goals for Learning, Measures of Learning, and Teaching for Learning within this document. And quite frankly, that's as far as I got today, as I was working on this. I'm also putting this together to share with our faculty as well. As you can see, when we get into these indicators, it's largely organized around what's happening internally in the school system. That's not to say we don't want the perspective of a parent or another community member. That's important perspective to have on this. So the group was charged with going out and may have spoken to parents, may have spoken to board members, may have spoken to community members as part of their assessment. That being said, the next phase of this process will be to engage the community, to share what the ratings were, and to see if the community, if there's congruence, if there's agreement around this, or if the community has further feedback to provide related to the assessment or any of the planning that's being done, or the action steps that are being recommended as a result of these assessments. So that's just kind of a broad overview of where we are right now in the process. A lot more to come through our next work session. These are full-day work sessions. They're pretty intense. We have another one next week, and then an additional one in January. One last piece for tonight, and then I can answer any questions. Between next week and the holiday break, I will be sending something out in the next day or two about additional opportunities to come in and learn about the process. Megan in my office is just working on a communication to put out, so folks can come in. We might attach one or two of those to a school event just prior, figuring we'll have families coming in anyway, to meet with me. I'll provide an overview that I provided to the board at our last meeting. Might get into some of this as well, just because I think it's illustrative of where we are in the process. And then we still have a date in January for Jonathan, which Jonathan will be here to talk more about the process as well. So a lot going on. I'll have more to share at our next board meeting, because we will have met again as a coherence planning team. So things are moving along quite readily. Any questions at this point?
My question is about, can you remind us what the, what the next step of community engagement looks like? What is that?
So there'll be, informally, there'll be an opportunity to meet with me to hear more about the process. Then there will be, Jonathan will be here, right in January, after we've completed a draft of the plan, or at least where we are up to that point. It's our goal to have a draft at that point. A thought exchange will launch again at that point, and the basis of that thought exchange and Jonathan's work is to provide feedback on the plan that's been developed thus far.
And the alignment, the public sharing of the ratings or the assessment, the rubric, and the capturing of community input on, yes, that's right, yes, how's that work?
So-
Was that in something that you mentioned?
I don't know if I, if there was anything I illustrated on how that will work. That's something that I probably have some questions about for Jonathan as well. But the idea is that the community will see the full draft of the plan, which will, it's a little more exhaustive than even this. So all the indicators will be listed, the, the ratings will be listed, but also the gap analysis that was done by each team will be included in that. So the community will be able to see the specific evidence that was collected, or references to the specific evidences, that evidence that was collected, to determine, to arrive at that rating. And then the thought exchange is designed in such a way to have feedback provided. I'm not exactly sure on the setup of what that will look like, but would be happy to share it with the board prior to its launch.
Sorry, sorry about that. Oh, thank you.
Also add, it's been really impressive to me. So when the, all of this information is being gathered, you know, it doesn't happen in a vacuum. There's these, this 18 people or so that are on the teams, but then they're asking questions to the staff, to the faculty, to the administration, to the Board of Education. I was on the team where we were looking at the external factors. So what could happen that's not in our control? What's happening with the Chamber of Commerce? What's happening with our mental health? And the leaders in our community were not only available and interested in giving feedback and giving their opinions, but they were really generous with their time. And so already, this has become a real group effort, even though it hasn't been, all the community forums haven't, you know, haven't happened yet. But there's been a lot of outreach into the community, and the response has been really impressive, in my opinion, of people just really wanting to help and give as much information and time as they can. So there has been some, some spidering out into the community.
Yeah, I would say, so we had about 180 people participate in the thought exchange. There's 18 who are a part of the coherence planning team, the core team. And there were five groups. And I would say on the low end, one group probably engaged four to five different community members. And then on the high end, I think a group engaged somewhere between 12 and 15 members of the community, whether they be internal, or meaning faculty and staff, or external. So if you look at that out-
It's starting to web. You know, it's starting to have some reach.
More to come on that. And the second part, if I can just keep rolling right into the budget presentation, because we're, it's that time of the year. We're going to be spending some time each month talking about budget. Yes. So tonight, we're scheduled to provide an overview of the rollover budget. Ann is going to lead the majority of this presentation, and I'll take just one part of it. So Ann, I will pass the mouse down to you. Jen, if you don't mind.
So tonight's the beginning of our, of our budget season, as Dr. Benante just laid out for us. So tonight, we're just going to really quickly go over some preliminary data that I have that helped me develop the rollover budget, and show you the summary. And then we'll touch on the budget calendar, which is on the agenda for approval later in the evening, and our proposed parameters, and then some partner meetings. So what is a rollover budget? It's a starting point of most school district budgets, and it just answers the question based on our contracts that are already in place and other projected increases that we know. What would it cost to operate the school district next year with the current staff and program? And then from that point is, we factor in staff and program changes, support items, and we shape the budget for the next school year plan based on, you know, what, what might come out of the budget, and what are we hoping to add to next year's. We compare that with our revenue, and that's how we're going to get to our end product for May.
Just, just as a quick question, remind me, this does not take into consideration projected, does it, does it, or does it, I'll ask the question rather than make an assumption. Does it, or does it not take into consideration retirements?
It does not.
Does not. So even known retirements are not calculated?
Even known retirements are not in a rollover budget. It's a snapshot of the staff and programs right now, what will it cost next year?
Thank you.
And we do, you know, we, we do use that breakage going forward for proposal, for the proposal.
Awesome. Thank you.
So as of right now, I have estimates. There's only one item, which is the employee retirement system percentage, which will remain at 14.6% of salaries. That's the only known bit of data that I have as it relates to our, our benefits. And most of our budget, as you know, creeping up on 80% now, is salaries and benefits. Salaries are contractual items, and our benefits are the other, these are the heaviest, the top three are the heaviest areas as far as making up the cost for, for the budget. The health insurance premiums, projected to increase 3%. Again, that's an estimate. That's what Putnam Northern Westchester advised that we use. The retirement system, for teachers' retirement system, 10.25%. That's an increase over last year's contribution rate of 8.86% of salaries from the current year's budget. As you'll see when, when we discuss what makes up the, the increase, which is larger than, than last year's rollover budget, a large portion is based on, on this factor. What we enjoyed in 1920 is almost the exact opposite. It went from 10.6% to 8.86, and now it's back up to over 10 again. And still is, BOSI's 2021 budget data, I estimated, based on trends from the past few years, but I do not have our actual BOSI's budget, which is another large percentage of our budget. Our current year's final budget is $24,605,008. And the 2021 rollover budget, based on the same staff and programming, we would be looking at over a million-dollar increase, which is 4.4%, 4.4% increase for the rollover budget. Now, last year, as I pointed out, it was 3.59%. You can see it's about, you know, a little less than $200,000 increase over last year's rollover budget. And that really is directly attributable to the TRS increase.
And just for context, this was the initial, last, I'm just looking at last year's. The initial 1920 roller projection increase was 3.59. And because many people have said I cannot keep a single piece of information in my head for any amount of time, what did we end up, what was the actual final budget over budget increase?
It was about, it was 2.7-ish.
So it started 3.59, came down to 2.7 through, okay, machinations. Just one other, just one other question that I don't think I've ever asked, is, so the three things that you put, or four things that you put on the previous slide in terms of, in terms of big chunks, health premium increases, TRS contributions, which are determined by, is it state?
Yes.
The state? ERS, which is similarly determined by the state, and BOSI's, which is, so those are non, those are things that are, the first three are things that are based on a sal, on the total, a total salary?
The health insurance premiums are not based on a salary.
Okay.
It's not a percentage of salary. It's, it's not something within our control either.
Yeah, no, I know.
Okay, so the, we're part of the health consortium.
Yep.
And they pretty, they just tell us what the percentage is going to be for our health insurance premiums for next year.
That's right. So TRS is, we contribute 10% of salary, ERS is 14% of salary. What, if we strip out these costs, what is our base salary expected year over year, roughly? Is it growing? So we're paying, 80%, of our total budget is salaries and benefits. These are all benefits, stripping out BOSI's. What's the salary portion? I'm assuming that's a large portion of the 80%. And how much do we expect that to go up, realizing you haven't taken into consideration retirement, people coming in at lower, but if we're keeping the same people, what, do you have a sense of what our base salary would go up year over year?
It's difficult for me to answer that question right now.
That's totally fair.
Only because there is a contract expiring at the end of the year. So I don't have hard numbers on that.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Ann, I know I had asked a question, or you had made a point today as we were going through this. I think you had determined, had the TRS remained the same, what the rollover budget increase would be?
Right. Well, I compared the 1920 rollover budget, just the benefit portion, with the 2021. The increase in the benefit chunk, and so even though health insurance went up, TRS went down. So they canceled each other out a bit. So last year, the benefit portion was an increase of $20,000. This year, the benefit portion increases $325,000. So-
So the healthcare, the TRS, and the ERS combined?
Right. Those combined are, is a $300,000 swing in the rollover budget. So without those items, we're, we would be less, our rollover budget would be less than it was last year. But those items, you know, because they're a large portion of our budget, really make an impact. It's like when we talk about our special ed tuition, one or two, either way, can really impact, really impact our budget as well, because it's, the budget's really small. So just for, for convenience, there's our 2021 budget calendar that we're going to ask the board to act on later in the meeting.
So last year, we had presented some parameters for the board's consideration, really in an attempt to, for the, to establish a bit of a dialogue prior to us getting too far in the budget development process. So we understood what boundaries, if you will, you wanted us to try to stay within. So I'm presenting them again tonight for your consideration and for discussion. Not to come to any conclusion tonight, but I think by the end of next meeting, as it would be very helpful to the administration, as we're now going back and beginning to build the budget for the upcoming school year for your consideration, it'll give us some boundaries to, to work with. So the first is to, I'm proposing to develop a budget up to the levy limit. We went up to the levy limit last year, considering the increased costs that we're likely to incur for the retirement system and for health insurance. I think it's even more important this year to go up to the levy limit. That's just my opinion at this point. We are in the middle of a coherence planning process, and I do think there will be recommendations that we will have at some point along the way. However, we're going to be beginning the budget development process while, prior to the coherence process coming to a full conclusion. So to the extent possible, I would imagine the board would want us to be considering any recommendations that came through the coherence planning process as best we could, given the timing. Certainly going into next, when we're in next school year, we'll likely start with this as a budget parameter, assuming that the final plan has the board's full support. That will be a starting point, but we'll see what we can do, if anything, through the development process for this year. And the rollover budget is based on maintaining all existing programs for students. My sense is the board would want us to consider that in development of next year's budget as well. But there's room for discussion for that, certainly, if the board wanted us to examine any, any particular area. So this is meant as a starting point. If you'd like to talk about it now, great. If you want to sit with it, perhaps considering two of our board members are not here. But I think by the end of our next board meeting, we should have some sense of direction, closure on this, so we can go ahead and get started.
What were our parameters last year? Was there also, I know the coherence planning piece wasn't there, but was there also a class size piece, someone?
No, although I would say this last bullet was a part of it, and I would say that's inclusive of class size.
Okay, so maybe we just mentioned it.
Yeah. I did include class size information through the budget development process last year.
I guess without opening a can of worms, the, the scope of said recommendations include, I would imagine, increases versus decreases, cuts versus, I mean, what's the, the range of recommendation that you, you see?
Yeah, from the coherence plan, just-
I don't think you'll see any recommendations for reductions as much as potential. And I don't think it will be as clear as, you know, hire somebody to do this, as much as, as we look at the recommendations. I may say to the board and to the coherence team, in order to make, or to meet these expectations, it's my recommendation that we add this particular component to program. I think there'll be a series of recommendations that won't cost any money, or any new money. It will be a matter of coordinating or shifting our focus to more deliberately in particular areas, and it's perhaps monies that are already included in the budget. So it would make sense to probably start there, just given the timing of this. But I would want to be candid with the board about that, depending on what those recommendations are. I'm just speculating now, obviously, I know. But it's a good question, Joe.
When was the la, this is sort of a leading question. When was the last time we did away with a program? And you're probably not, like-
I'd have to research it. I'm not familiar with us.
It's like, I, I like the, I like the intent of maintaining programs for students. If we have a program that is no longer fitting the purpose of the students in our community, I think that we should make sure that we're not spending money, money that would be better spent for the greater good someplace else.
Sure. So I would say-
I don't know how to-
So I agree with you. And let's say this last piece was accepted as a parameter for the board, but as we were going through the budget, so part of the budget development process, especially the first, I would say from this point, or from the point of our second meeting through the end of January, is really sitting closely with our building administrators and our teacher leaders to talk about just that. What programs do we feel are helping or contributing to the success of our students, and what programs or initiatives do we feel are not? And while I would be developing a budget with this as a parameter, if I, if we had a sense from our, from our, yeah, from our educators that we don't need to spend money in this particular area in this way anymore, and maybe we would be well-served diverting those funds to this, whatever it may be, I would come back to the board and feel, okay, so we established this parameter, we're going to shift off of it because of this feedback that we were hearing from our, from our staff or from our administrators. So I, I think it just gives us something to honor, that anytime I'm going outside of this, I have to-
Yeah.
-come back to the board and communicate that.
Or even you, I might think of it, I might think of it, in my head is, from a budgeting perspective, we're going to budget so that we can do everything that we're currently doing. If it turns out that we need to do something else, that's fine. But we have the, we're not going to contract the program because we don't have the budget for it. We're going to contract the program if there's a reason to do it.
Correct.
Okay, great.
And at times, I'm sorry. I was just gonna-
Go ahead, please.
There may be a point, I'm not sure, because some of these are projections that Ann is proposing. It may come out of necessity at some point. When you're dealing with a levy limit, and we don't know what our levy limit is yet, again, I may have to come back to the board and say, we're trying to develop a budget that's maintaining all existing programs for students. We feel good about all the existing programs there are for students, but we have to make some value decisions here at this point, because our levy limit and our differential is, is too big. We can't do it without making a reduction in a particular area.
Right. Okay. They're parameters. They're not-
Correct. They're not hardened, they're not rules.
They're not rules. Yep.
I was thinking of it as not wanting to give our kids any less.
Definitely.
So it may be giving them something different.
Right.
But we don't want to give them any less than what they're currently being given.
Yeah, that's a good way to describe it.
Yeah.
Recall that last year, even with this parameter, we were able to include in the budget the BCBA. Recall that last year, even with this parameter, we were able to include in the budget the BCBA. We were able to include in the budget a level of curriculum support at a leadership level. So when there's opportunity, we, we're building in what we, what we think will have a direct impact on our, on our students and our staff. Ultimately, to, even that impact on our staff is to help our students. So right now, again, a little speculative, because we're not sure what our, our levy limit is, and there's still some things to flesh out over the next couple of months. But, you know, our hope is that it certainly works out in, in our favor, our students' favor.
Great.
So we'll come back to that at our next meeting. And lastly, thank you, Ann. Want to be a little more deliberate with how we are setting up the communication calendar, I'll call it that, for the budget development process. So if we really think of it, we have about a five-week window, or I have about a five-week window, to communicate what the administration has recommended to the board for consideration. So remember, we're, we're arriving at a point, I mean, we as the administration with the board, that here is our recommended budget for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. You have about five weeks to determine or charge the administration with making changes to it, or to decide, or to hear from the community that it's, it's good to go. So during that five-week window, I see it as my responsibility to be communicating what we've recommended up to that point to various stakeholder groups. I've listed some here. I, I may not, I may not have hit all of them, but I want to at least work through this with the board well in advance, so we can put a calendar together and begin to get these, you know, on the radar through. There you go. Thank you, Kimberly. So get these, you know, in place for, for that window. Keep in mind, spring break occurs during that time as well, so a lot, it's five weeks, but a lot's going on in that five-week period. So I, I don't want to take for granted that we'll just do it, and before you know it, you're in the middle of it, and you're trying to scramble to get some, get some meetings on the, on the calendar. So obviously, our PTA, our school foundation, the Arts Alliance, these are all groups that I, I tend to interact with quite regularly. I do meet with the faculty and staff, I should say faculty and staff, it's my mistake. We did some community forums last year, I'd like to get those on the calendar again. I had some good feedback from the board last year about reaching out to our senior citizens, and specifically those who are at Chestnut Ridge, so I'll look to get that in place. I'd like to sit down with the PCNR and the current, perhaps more a one-on-one to talk through it, whether or not they want to run an article on it is fine, they certainly attend our meetings, which is great, but there may be an opportunity there just to engage in a little more in-depth discussion about what was influencing the budget development process as well. So those are a few that come to mind, again, I'll, I'll look for the board's feedback on this. And as I said last year, I'll meet with anybody who wants to meet with me to talk about the budget once we get to this point. It's very important that the community is well-informed. We have also designated the same area of the website where we are putting all of the information through, about the budget development process, including the calendar that was presented to the board, or we will put the calendar that was presented to the board last meeting that you're voting on tonight. Tonight's presentation, that will all go into the budget development tab under the Board of Education section of the website. So that area has already been set up today and is ready to have information stored in it. So with that, I think if there's any questions or more questions or answers we can provide.
No, I was just looking back at the calendar. So this is, I think, a great, fantastic, in terms of outreach, I think that's a great idea. In terms of calendarization, so I noticed, I was just checking the, because I can't keep it in my head. So by the third, you should have had, will have heard all three components. And so by fourth, the entire budget will be assembled from this, okay, and ready to shop around. As, just in terms of, if there is, if there's feedback, sorry, if there's feedback from the community that we then need, want to reincorporate into a conversation, would you want that to hit by the, realizing that the fourteenth is, I don't know. How long, like, if there's serious questions, I'm not expecting there to be serious question, but you never know. You want it to stack up on the seventeenth?
Of March?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
The absolute last minute would be the fourteenth, because you have to adopt a budget
Right.
on the twenty-first.
Right.
So I'm assuming the board doesn't want Ann and me to come on the twenty-first with things we've scrambled to pull together for you to then adopt, that you may want to, you know, you may have questions about, or may want more time to deliberate upon. So, yeah, ideally, that's front-loaded.
Okay.
I think we'll have a pretty good idea of what direction things are heading in in February. So certainly, you know, we'll be providing you with information all along, while we're doing special presentations through January and February. We'll certainly give you an impression of, you know, whether or not we're, we're concerned that we need to make. The biggest concern usually is, do you need to make reductions?
Right.
And is that going to impact class size, and if so, how? I think we'll have pretty good, we'll have a good idea of that in, in February.
Probably by the, the curriculum instruction program one, yeah.
So I think March, mid-March is fair.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering, is if, if there is a particular board meeting we, we want to lean a little more weight on? If you, as the public, have comments or concerns that you want to make sure get in front of the board, is there a time that we want to say, this is your, this is kind of, don't wait until the fourteenth, the twenty-first?
It would be the seventeenth, but keep in mind, we also reserve the thirty-first for a special meeting if needed.
Okay.
So we have that as a backup, it gives us a little more time. But you see, it, it catches up pretty quickly, so we want to be deliberate with how we're setting this up. I don't want to give any misrepresentation that we're concerned, we, we don't know. We're, we're not encouraged by the, the, the TRS number. You know, and the rollover number right now, as Ann will say, when she said four percent, four percent, you know. I had a bit of a reaction to that today, but, but I, there's still a lot to play out, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, going into our committee minutes, the technology minutes are there from November eighteenth for us to peruse. Is there any communication from the public? Crickets. Okay, our information reports, they are here for anyone to read. And then we go into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
These are the minutes from November nineteenth. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation? Do you want to just talk through Mr. Stronconi's?
Sure.
Change?
Mr. Stronconi has requested to delay his retirement. For good reason, he reviewed the matter with me and had asked if we would consider, since the board had already acted upon his anticipated retirement at the end of next school, or I'm sorry, at the end of next calendar year, if he could delay that by one year. And I, the unique piece about our CSEA contract is that when members indicate that they're retiring or they're intent to retire, they actually have, there is a benefit that kicks in at a certain point. Mr. Stronconi has not reached that point, so I thought that was relevant in asking you to reconsider extending his date. Also, he had, as is indicated, his wife was working for a large employer, and I know Tony wouldn't mind me sharing this, but the company's dissolving. So I think that constitutes a pretty significant unanticipated life circumstance that would warrant us reconsidering someone who's expressed his, expressed their intention to retire. So those two factors, considering the uniqueness of the situation, I think warrant reconsideration. So it's my recommendation to the board that we do so. And added benefit, we don't mind having Mr. Stronconi around at all. He was very helpful today in getting ours campus.
Facilities director coming on.
Yes, yeah, so I think it's, you know, in the end, hopefully, everything works out with his, with his wife, but perhaps a blessing in disguise, so.
That's right.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the CSE CPSC placement recommendations, Ms. Famularo?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the school budget calendar for twenty twenty-one?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Haldane School Budget Calendar for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So this last item is something that came up for us. Last night, Dr. Benante said, hey, if I have to close school, do you still want to have the board meeting? And I said, sure, I'll just let everyone know, if you feel like we can open the building, let's do it. But it, it made us consider that maybe we need to have a conversation about making sure that the board knows what happens if there's a snow day on a board meeting night, or for the public to know, is there still a meeting? How would they know if there's still a meeting? How would the, the press know? So we thought we would just talk through that a little bit. My sense is that if there's a snow day and there's a full-on cancellation, the expectation would be that the board meeting would also be canceled. However, if there's, you know, if it's cleared up, you know, by midday, it seems silly to postpone important business. That could be conducted. But then the problem is, how do we make sure everyone knows that the board meeting's happening? The board is easy, we can send a text and everyone will get it. But how will the public know that there is in fact a board meeting happening? And how would the press know? So those questions I don't exactly have the answer to, do you?
I don't, I, I don't know if it's the answer, I have some ideas. So we, today was a good example where, depending on how the bands of snow worked out, we could have ended up with a bit more snow and actually had to close. I'm glad we just had a two-hour delay. But given what the forecast was after, you know, eight, eight o'clock, and I won't really, it was earlier for us, but if it had only lasted one more hour, we could have had to close, but it would have been relatively clear the rest of the day. We would have been able to clear the campus. And I wouldn't have had an issue having a board, I personally would have had an issue having a board meeting that night or this evening. And I think that, so that's this type of scenario we're talking about. So one, does the board desire, i- if it's able to, to conduct its business, if the campus is clear and it's safe for everybody to come in? As far as notifying interested parties, unless we explicitly, we take the approach, unless we explicitly state that the meeting is canceled, the meeting's on. Or we could go ahead, and I can coordinate with my staff to just confer with the local papers that the meeting is still on, put a message on the website that the meeting is still on, and include it in our, whatever message I'm sending out to the community to announce that a school is closed. I can use the same messaging system to announce that the board, the board meeting is still on. So those are all options as far as getting the word out. Conversely, there's going to be times, I think, inevitably, at some point, where after, we're scheduled to get inclement weather, perhaps in the evening, and we're going to have to cancel the board meeting even though school was in session. So it goes either way. My, my background experience has been when there's an opportunity to meet, if you, if you're able to meet, you should meet, because you don't know how many times you're going to encounter inclement weather that's going to interfere with your ability to meet through, especially through the winter months, so.
Yeah, I think that's my inclination as well. I think we have to be just deliberate about making sure everyone knows.
I like the, I like the basic assumption that unless it, unless you hear otherwise, it's going to happen. And then there's a, you make the call by X. Either school is happening and we think there's going to be inclement weather, we're going to make the call by X. School is not happening and we think it's going to clear, we still, by noon, or by two, or by something, there's a statement on the website. But otherwise, you assume it's, if no other, for no other information, it's going to happen.
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, and let's hope it doesn't happen.
Okay, good. Any further communication from the public? Yes, ma'am?
I went onto the website this morning to see if we're having a meeting. The first thing that popped up was school head tour, like, maybe on that page you can also say, there's still.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
On the home, was that on the website, the homepage?
Yeah, so whenever we have a delay or any other emergency notification, if you log on to our website, it comes up. And then it expires at a certain point, so Megan manages that. So that's where we could put a notice if there was any change to. We do that for, if we have to cancel after-school activities because a storm's coming through. We can do the same with our board meeting. If we had to provide notification that the meeting was being canceled, we would use that. And then we would, we could also use our, our messaging system as well.
Great, thank you, Cecilia, good idea. Okay, in our board reflections, I'd like to reflect on our awesome retreat that we had, which already seems like a really long time ago.
I was like, this is the first one we've had since our retreat, really?
It was just two weeks, when was it, a week and a half ago?
It was before Thanksgiving, which makes it feel like forever.
Feels like a really long time ago. So for the public, we had our joint retreat with Garrison at Winter Hill. And NISBA came all the way from the Albany area to, Mark Snyder, a representative from NISBA, came to lead us through the board self-evaluation tool, so that both boards can use that evaluation tool if, if desired to help us get better at, at governance. I personally thought it was a really great event. I thank Ms. Famularo for her coordination of the event and NISBA. But also, it was just really, I thought, fantastic to work with our neighboring school district in a really productive, collaborative way to get to know each other. And also, I'm really excited about using the self-evaluation tool. I think all of us probably had things, you know, in our head of like, oh, do we do that? Or, oh, we could do that, or, you know, just, just ways to improve how we work. So I thought it was an all-around fantastic event. Did you guys have anything to add? Did you feel the same?
I agree, I mean, I thought that it was, in particular, it was great to be working with the, the board at Garrison, getting to know them a different way, getting to understand how they frame, you know, the, the issues that might be going on on campus there without disclosing too much information. We were all pretty, you know, private about our own affairs, but just getting, getting a sense of what their chemistry was, and I feel like the camaraderie was, you know, was very good, I think, in terms of communication between districts. I think was very positive, and I was very encouraged by it.
Given that we're on camera, I'm not going to say anything bad about the Garrison School District, you guys are doing a great job. No, but what I, what I did, what I did want to say was that it was, it's, I think it's always interesting to, because we just always see ourselves and our norms and how we function. And it was really interesting to see another group that does the exact same thing, but they obviously have different norms and how they approach questions. And sometimes it's things that you would say, I wouldn't do it that way, and sometimes you're like, oh, that's really interesting, how can we incorporate? So that, the more you see different entities do the same role, I think you learn from it. Just that, I thought, was useful, but I thought the self-evaluation tool was also really, which is great, because we, we need to do that, so. It was good, that was really good.
So more to come on how the board will apply all that we learned. But I thought it was a really good start.
Yeah.
Oh, and I guess I, the other thing I'll say is that after the meeting, they were very complimentary of our superintendent and threatened to come and try to take you away from my problems.
I'll take any compliment I can get right now, especially on a snow day.
Well, I, in walking down Mountain Avenue this morning, to my car, which is parked across, because we have no off-street parking in my house, we park over across by the, the fields, totally slipped and ended on my rear, lost all my coffee, that was the worst part of the morning. So it was very slick at.
It was slick, so.
It was.
Yeah. Okay, great. Dr. Benante, do you have any final thoughts?
Yeah, I just, I, I will add that my, I want to express my appreciation to the board and to the Garrison board for, you know. and to the Garrison Board for, you know, spending a Saturday, essentially talking about board processes, which is not the most exciting way to spend your weekend, but really important work. And I, I'd hope that the board has found, we've spent several, several hours and over several times in retreat, and I felt that walking away from those experiences, this is now our probably third or fourth retreat, I've always felt that it's time really well-spent. I feel that the dynamic among our board members is something that's largely positive and constructive in our processes, and I appreciate that we don't take that for granted. And it's something that, as the board continues to grow, I think has a direct influence on the leadership of the district, I can say that, which ultimately has an influence, a positive influence on our, on our kids. So I just wanted to first express my appreciation for your commitment to that. And again, found it really, I was, I was really glad to spend time with the Garrison Board. I had not met many of their board members outside of the meeting we had last year, and I thought that was something that Jen had organized with their leadership in lieu of doing the joint meeting. We just felt that was a better use of, of our time, and it was a better way to honor our relationship, and I, I think that totally proved to be true, and so I'm glad that we did so. Just a reminder to our community members and to our board members that concert season is upon us, so we have, our students will be performing several times over the course, at the elementary, middle, and high school level over the course of the next two weeks, so please, if you have the opportunity to check out one of the concerts, I hope to see you there. And also, Andrew is not here, because I know he's at play practice, but on the sixth and seventh, so this Friday and Saturday, our student, students involved in the Halliday Drama will be performing The Laramie Project, and a really profound play, and I hope to see you there. I'll be there Friday night, so I hope to see you there, and it's a great production. I know our kids have spent a lot of time on it and really taken the time to understand the story and the history behind the play, and are really looking forward to putting it on for our community this weekend, so looking forward to that. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual that is not on our agenda, but that is my motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will not be coming back, and no action will be taken. Thank you.